Please perform the second reading on item number four, please.
An ordinance authorizing and approving a cooperative agreement with the Min America Regional Council for funding operations of Operation Green Light Traffic Control System in an amount not to exceed $9,623.25.
Mr. Knoll, again, anything to add, sir?
No, nothing new from the last meeting.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Pardeau has a motion to approve, seconded by Ms. Melson. Discussion before we vote.
Ms. Mayor.
Mr. Azier.
Yeah, Andy, I have a question. These green lights that we're talking about are specifically only on 350 Highway?
No, these are on Blue Ridge Cutoff and Blue Ridge Boulevard on the west side of town.
How many lights does that actually entail?
Three within the city of Raytown that we are responsible for the payment. There are lights that are controlled that are part of this Operation Green Light on 350 Highway, but MoDOT incurs the costs for those lights, those traffic signals.
Basically, they're $3,000 a light?
Yes, we...the costs are split according to the total cost to run the Operation Green Light by the participating entity's number of traffic signals divided by the total of traffic signals. So we have three out of 1,833 lights. So that's our percentage that we're paying of the total cost to operate the Operation Green Light.
Why does it cost three...is it $3,000 for the year? I mean, what are we actually paying for?
Yeah. The total cost, it...right now is it starts at a thou...just about $1,100 for 2010 and then increases to $2,749 in 2014. What it pays for is the operation facility, the equipment, the personnel. So it pays for that total operating expense of around $1.1 million a year to operate all of Operation Green Light. So it's just our percentage of that total cost.
And we're paying to have the lights synchronized or we're paying to have them operated on a daily basis?
Both, yes. It can synchronize them and they can oper...they can change the timing on a daily basis, hourly basis. So...and then also for expertise at other traffic signals as well.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand how we're spending our money and what we're actually getting for $9,000.
I understand.
Thank you.
Mr. Hamilton.
Well, just as a follow-up, Mr. Knoll, is there...this has been going on for some years, so there must be some kind of quantitative data that supports that this project is being...that the outcomes of the project are favorable as were originally projected. Is any of that data available or do we just do this and do it or do it and...
I think a good example, I don't...I'm not aware of any quantitative data that supports it.
But I mean, shouldn't Mark be collecting data to justify that, yeah, this is a good program and it's really doing what we set out to accomplish?
Right. What we can do is we can provide the...how they're measuring that is the amount of delay during traffic incidents, such as the I-470 closing when they had to reroute a lot of traffic that was on 470. Some of it went to 350, some of it went up 435 and back around on 87th Street when they had that bridge or the retaining wall collapse. So there was a lot more in...there was a significant increase in traffic on 350 Highway. So what they were able to do is modify the timing on 350 Highway to accommodate that significant increase so that it just didn't come to a complete gridlock on 350 Highway. So some of it is hard to specifically quantify because you...it's hard to compare it, okay, did that act...did that incident happen at the same time? Did we have that same specific situation five years ago? Is it better this time than it was five years ago? So one thing maybe able to compare is at some special...maybe some sporting events or something downtown, I might be able to try to find some quantitative analysis, but it's hard to find the same conditions having been repeated, so other than maybe at Rush Hour, so.
Well, I mean...
As it continues, because they're just reaching that full implementation.
Chicago has a similar program and have you ever driven recently in Chicago?
Have not.
Well, I'm just curious, would it be possible to ask Mark whether or not...
Yes.
They have some kind of records or accumulation of data that says, yeah, this is really working?
Right, yes, I can request some information from Mark.
I mean, I'm just curious because it's been going on for a long time and...
Right, and we can bring that back before the municipal committee and provide some more information at some subsequent meetings about the progress...
Okay, I would appreciate that.
And some of the goals and how they're measuring those goals. We can do that.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Ertz.
Thank you. What fund will this money come out of?
This come out of the Transportation Sales Tax Fund.
Did this go before the Sales Tax Oversight Committee?
Yes.
So this is money that would go towards overlaying?
Yes, it does compete with those funds. Oh, I'm sorry, no, we're taking this out of the general fund, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I think at first we thought about taking out the Transportation Sales Tax, but then had those same concerns.
Yeah, I didn't see where it went before the Sales Tax Oversight Committee, so I was curious of that. And to be exact, what are the three lights?
It is 53rd, 59th, and 63rd Street.
So you're missing 67th?
I believe so, I forget the exact lights on...
It seems to me like they would be in order together if you're going to control traffic, there'd have one not in it.
Yeah, so I'd have to...I forget exactly which three there are, but there's some where you can have significant east-west movements at those locations as well.
I did talk to Officer McDonough with our traffic...I believe he heads our traffic department, our police department, and he thought it would also be useful in eliminating some accidents because of, you know, anytime you do anything to release...to ease frustration or keep traffic moving is generally a better idea for the public, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Van Busker.
So are the lights at these intersections controlled remotely or do they have to come out and manually put...change them?
No, they can do that remotely. They use a wide area network where they can view what's going on at the intersection and they can send new signal timing to update the controller at that location.
So they continuously control data relative to each of these intersections?
Um, but it basically...it will continue to operate on the preset timing regimen that is set for that controller, and then if there's an incident, they can then preempt that timing with new timing. So basically, they have a timing set up for each specific intersection and that continues to run unless there's an incident or a reason to change it, and then they can send a new timing instructions to the signal for that.
Well, there's, you know, certainly going to be incidents like traffic accidents, that type of thing, that are going to occur occasionally at any of these intersections, but I really have some questions as to how profitable this thing is for our city and whether it's money well spent. I would like to make a motion that we table this proposal until you have the additional information available that the other aldermen had requested from you and table it to a date certain of the next meeting, I'm not sure what date that would be.
May 3rd.
May 1st.
May 3rd.
3rd, May 3rd.
I don't know that we'd have that information by May 3rd from Mark, I'm not sure of the timeframe that would be to get that information.
What type of time would you need to get that?
I'd have to talk with Mark first to find out how long it will take him and what they can provide, because they may be able to do it quickly, I'm just...I don't know without discussing it with Mark to find out how long it would take to get that information.
Okay, well, I'd like to go ahead and make that motion and if the data is not available at that time, we can certainly continue it to a later date if necessary.
Mr. Willock, let me help you...or let me ask you a question on protocol here. We've got a motion and a second already on the floor, we've got a second motion being offered, and I think if I'm correct, that would potentially supersede the previous motion.
This would have priority if the table-ing motion.
Okay. So Mr. Van Busker has made a motion to continue this hearing to a date certain of...or excuse me, this item to a date certain of May 3rd, is that correct, Mr. Van Busker?
That's correct.
Need a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Mark?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. So the motion now is to table this until a date certain of May 3rd, the item number four, discussion on tabling the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Azier.
Would Mr. Van Busker clarify exactly why he wants to wait? I mean, what is the information that will be provided going to do to change our overall vote on this issue? Can you explain that, please?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I...just clarification as to whether this is valuable...this is valuable to our city or not, and if there is, in fact, data that's being gathered that can confirm that or that would confirm that. If there isn't, then I think it, you know, we don't really know what it's doing, we're just spending money.
Ms. Mayor. I guess my opinion would be that the only way to collect data is actually to run the program once so we can collect data, therefore I'd be opposed to the motion.
Ms. White.
I'm a little surprised at the motion because this did go through municipal committee and I didn't hear these kinds of concerns, but if you go onto the Mark website, and I hope that most of you have, there is a great deal of information on Operation Green Light. And Operation Green Light serves several purposes. It is a regional type of initiative, first of all, and that's something we need to stress, it's not just Raytown alone, it deals with traffic all around the region. By regulating these lights, we also help improve the air quality. You know, we do have a great deal of car, bus traffic in the Kansas City metropolitan, and if we can keep that traffic moving, you know, you're not sitting at a stoplight idling for no reason. So again, I have some concerns about why suddenly this...we have these questions when it went through municipal committee, and second, I would encourage everyone on the board to go to the Mark website.
Mr. Kramer.
I too have reservations about why it was brought forward, as Ms. White said, and she kind of beat me to the punch, it did go through municipal and it was voted on and sent on to the Board of Aldermen. I will say, and I've always said, I look forward to the opportunity to have traffic jams in Raytown because we have so much business and stuff like that in this community, but I do see it as beneficial, especially along Blue Ridge on game days when the Chiefs are playing and stuff like that, where somebody can remotely control that and keep that traffic flow going along Blue Ridge, so I by no means could support moving this to May 3rd.
Mr. Ertz.
I respect municipal committee's opinion, but again, I don't...haven't heard anything that two weeks is going to hurt anything either if this waits to be approved. $1,800 a light is, I believe, the 1,833 per light is the city's share of the operating cost...no, wait, but that's...well, it changes every year, but that's the cost of it. It's an amount of money, it's not, you know, when you look at the entire budget, it's not a lot, but I think we...in these economic times, we can take a look at this and I don't have any problem waiting two weeks.
Mr. Van Busker, again.
Well, it's something we have been participating in...Mr. Knoll, is that not correct?
Yes, it is, we have been participating with Operation Green Light, participating in the selection of some of the consultants and the software up until this point, I believe a vast majority of it's been funded by a grant, so...
So it's not a brand-new program that we're starting right now, it has...it's something that we've been involved with, right?
Yes, it's been a process for at least probably four years getting it to this point...
Okay.
Where they can start to see some of the results.
I certainly...I am on the municipal committee and I did vote to move this forward to the full board, but certainly I have the option and the right to take another look at something and question, you know, whether it should be done or not, and, you know, I have more questions have came forth to me since that particular meeting, so I certainly don't believe it would do any harm to delay this for a couple of weeks to see if we can get some more information to help us make an informed decision. Thank you.
Mr. Pardeau.
Yes, just to give my two cents, I think personally, I feel like we've been given quite a bit of information of what this is going to do, it's going to be synchronizing lights, it's going to give them the control to remote this, it's going to make traffic more efficient with our lights, so to me, that's enough to go ahead and pass this, I'm going to have to say no on the motion, and I would urge our members here, if we have questions over the last month, this has been in municipal or the Board of Aldermen, to ask those before they get this far and then to table stuff, I think it's inefficient and we need to be the...as efficient as we can for our cities, so that's where I stand.
Mr. Hamilton.
If we do table this for two weeks, does that jeopardize our position in any way with the operation?
I don't know that would jeopard...I don't know that two weeks would jeopardize it, I know that they...we're late with the funding at this point, so they...I know they just get more nervous every time we do delay it, so I don't know what it would...what the impacts would be other than they would start to doubt our commitment to the program.
Mr. Azier.
I did have a question regarding the original motion, and if we vote to table this, I won't be able to ask that question, so I need to ask that now. I did express an interest at the last meeting regarding to the statement that the major objective of this project is to reduce travel time and that if we thereby do that, we will reduce travel expenses and the pollution in the air. I guess, and I do expect to do my own homework, I don't expect staff to do that for me. My first question would be, would I find that kind of objective information on the website that Alderman White referred to, that how much we save per automobile in both pollution and travel time if we do these lights or for this overall program? Is that information available?
I don't know if that information is available on the website for Operation Green Light, I don't know the exact extent of what's available for that information.
Okay, then, I mean, I don't think that would change my vote, but if indeed we were tabling it so we could get this information, there'd be no reason for me to vote for it if the information's not there in the first place. We might as well go ahead and proceed with the original motion, that's what my comment is here. That is the information I think that Alderman Hamilton was referring to is exactly what are the benefits to the program. I do think we need to go forward with this program and with this vote regardless whether we have the information or not so we could collect it. I think that Mr. Hamilton's original suggestion is it would be nice to know that if indeed we could...we had knowledge of how much pollution we were reducing per automobile and how much we were saving each motorist, it might give us a pretty good reason why we should spend this money on all of our lights, not just three. So I would like to know that for the future, not necessarily for this particular program, but since we...this is an ongoing program, I would like to know that in the future, and if they're not gathering it, I would ask our staff to suggest to Mark if they would do that. Thank you.
Mr. Kramer.
Well, and as Mr. Knoll said, really, and we don't even know that we can collect this data from Mark by the next meeting, and what are we going to do at the next meeting if we don't have that information? Are we going to choose to table it? I see it as something that we need to move forward with in a time where gas is approaching $4 a gallon and we can reduce travel time for people, I think it's...I think it's important and beneficial to the people of this community. Also, the resource that we have as being part of this program would aid us in management of other lights within the community, isn't that correct?
That is correct, they can help us with signal timing at other traffic intersections that are controlled by traffic signals.
So it doesn't really just boil down to the cost per light here, that what it boils down to is the information that we can gather in management of other lights around the community and to better improve traffic flow and reduce travel time for people in the community, so I see no reason why we should table this.
I'm going to add also, before I go to the next person, that the city sits on the steering committee for Operation Green Light, we have for years. We're partners with Gladstone Independence, Kansas City, Leewood, Lee Summit, Lenexa, Liberty, and the list goes on and on and on. We're now playing in the big leagues and we need to keep playing in the big leagues. Let's make sure we do our homework, let's make sure we make good business decisions, but let's do them in a timely manner, please. Further discussion on the motion at hand, Mr. Van Busker one more time.
Now, actually, we owe for last year's too, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
We're behind one year.
That is correct.
Thank you.
For the discussion, we've voted on the motion, once, twice. Call the vote on the motion to move the...table the motion to a date certain of May 3rd, please.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
No.
Alderman White?
No.
Alderman Pardeau?
No.
Alderman Melson?
No.
Alderman Azier?
No.
Alderman Kramer?
No.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Yeah, motion fails, we're back to the original motion, which had been made to approve, item four in the second reading. Further discussion on the original motion.
I would just reiterate my comment to Mr. Knoll earlier that I think we all would appreciate whatever information Mark can provide us. It was not my intent to delay or prevent our participation in this program, but I think that whatever information may be available, we all would appreciate having an opportunity to see that and evaluate it each on our own. Thank you.
Mr. Knoll, would you mind asking the representative from Mark for Operation Green Light to maybe come out in a...if not the next meeting, in a subsequent meeting to address this matter more fully with us, please?
I will, I'm sure they'll be willing to do so.
Thank you. Ms. White?
No.
Further discussion on the original motion? Call the vote, please.
Alderman Pardeau?
Yes.
Alderman Melson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
And the one many of us are waiting for, item number five, please.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hamilton.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you...I would like to be excused so I can get some new batteries for Mr. Knoll for my little hearing aid, and I don't wish that you need to hold up proceedings for me, I'll just get this done and come back.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Henry, are you reporting on item five?
Yes, I am.
It's your...all yours, ma'am.
I would like to report the official certification from the April 5th, 2011 municipal election for the office of mayor, David Bauer, 2,574 votes, Anwar Khan, 319 votes. Raytown collector, Kathy Shute, 2,429 votes. Alderman Ward 1, Joe Kramer, 342 votes, Greg Walters, 280 votes. Alderman Ward 2, Roppy Tubbs, 153 votes, John Jacob, 77 votes, Jim Azier, 549 votes. Alderman Ward 3, Dwayne Basham, 128 votes, Charlotte Melson, 330 votes. Alderman Ward 4, Pat Ertz, 434 votes, Michelle Williams, 134 votes. Alderman Ward 5, Michael Lightfoot, 416 votes.
City clerk has asked to...a motion to certify the...or to accept the certified election results, as read by her at this time, Mr. Van Busker.
I move that the election results be approved, certified.
Seconded by Mr. Kramer, so we've got a motion and a second. Dare I ask if there's any discussion? Ms. White, discussion? Okay, no discussion apparent, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote, please.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Melson?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman Pardeau?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
So I guess it passed.
That would be correct.
Hallelujah. And now we have something else to do?
That's correct, I would like to ask each one of you at a time to meet me at the podium with the administration of the oath.
I'm not going to turn you down on that.
All right.
One at a time? Yes, that's a yes, okay.
Pass my grandchildren's bedtime, so apologize for the noise.
You're swearing at me at this point. Mind if I ask my family to come up? Good.
On my oath, I do state that I, David Bauer, possess all the qualifications prescribed by the office of mayor by law, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Missouri, the provision of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class, and the ordinances of the city of Raytown, Missouri, and faithfully demean myself in office. Thank you.
You know, four years ago...four years ago, the pictures were taken and Kendall, my four-year-old granddaughter, had not yet been born, so that picture's going to be a lot different than it was four years ago. And many things have happened in the city. I want to, real quickly, before they do exit, thank my better half, my wife, Mary, for all of her patience, perseverance for all those nights that I was late getting home from council meetings because Mr. Mock kept us too long, for the surprises when I couldn't be there for dinner because I forgot to tell her about a meeting. Mary, I thank you for all that you do. My kids, thank you for putting up with me, Julie who writes all my material for me, bless her because she gets some pretty late-night assignments on those things at the last minute. And I love my grandkids and they're what makes the world turn for me right now. So thank you to the family, I appreciate all that you've done for me. Also, thank you to the voters, it was a real pleasure to get to know so many of you during the campaign, and in honor...and in honor for me that so many people rose to the occasion, shared their friends...shared with their friends their thoughts and spoke their minds by way of their vote. The message received was we liked the way things were going, but do not... The message received was we liked the way things were going, but do not, do not take the confidence for granted. The voters have spoken their mind, and we must be careful about the way we manage our business here at City Hall. As elected officials, we need to remind ourselves that we serve at the discretion of you, the voters. And we need to be even more diligent in reaching out to you for the purpose of, of better understanding your concerns and respond accordingly. A thank you to the board of Aldermen. We work well together, every one of you. And I, I don't ask that we always agree, but I do ask that we are always respectful to one another, and always keep the best interest of our city at heart and at the foundation of every decision we make. And I commend you for making that decision, every one of your votes. We have accomplished much, but there are still difficult issues ahead that will require our continued dedication and diligence as we continue to move our city forward. And to what we must challenge ourselves to accomplish, to create a level, to get us to a level beyond even our current imagination. Thank you to the administrative staff. Sometimes they make noise in the back of the room because they may or may not agree with what we're doing. Sometimes they bet on when the meeting will be over, but we won't admit to that. A hash to you, the directors, administrators, the department heads, the first responders, and the many good people that make this city of ours shine on a daily basis. I thank you. This city has accomplished a lot this past four years based upon a solid foundation of our predecessors. And largely, the credit goes to you, the administrative staff, the professionals this board has, has consequently charged on behalf of the citizens and entrusted to you to operate on a daily basis. I am proud to be the mayor of this great city, and I thank you, every one of you, for all that you do to maintain the pride and the rich heritage this city is known for. Thank you.
On my oath, I, Kathy, possess all the qualifications, describe by the office of Aldermen by law, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class, and the ordinances of the city of Raytown, Missouri, and faithfully demean myself while in office. Thank you. She just told me this is my moment. I just want to take a moment to thank all the voters that voted for me. Thank you for all the wonderful salary discussions we had this year. It was fun. Thank you to my bodyguard who's sitting out there. Hi. And thanks all of you for coming tonight.
What's that?
Charlie, did you ask what demean in office means? Did she explain it to you? I don't understand that. Do you know what that means? To demean yourself in office? That seems bad.
On my oath, I hereby state that I, Joe Kramer, possess all of the qualifications described by the office of Aldermen by law, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class, and the ordinances of the city of Raytown, Missouri, faithfully demean myself while in office. As the mayor said, you know, I want to thank, first of all, my family for, for tolerating me during election time. Of course, it requires a lot of time. And, and as the mayor said, there's, there's times when my wife was calling going, "Where are you at?", while I was still out knocking on doors and, and doing meetings at oddball times and stuff like that. But they've all been very supportive of me in my endeavors, and, and so I appreciate them for what they did. I want to thank the, the people of Raytown, Ward I, that, that voted for me and had confidence in me and the job that I did during the first four years. It was a learning process, and of course, I still maintain that every meeting and every packet that we get, I'm still learning and still trying to strive to do the best for the people of this community. So thank you. described by, for the office of Aldermen by law, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of the state affecting cities of this class, and the ordinances of the city of Raytown, Missouri, and faithfully demean myself in office. I, I too would like to thank my wife because, you know, I began preparing for this election in January, but forty-two days before the election, walked every day and, nonstop. She knew I was going to be out there hitting the doors and was really very supportive. And I'm sure there were days that I was quite grouchy because there was snow and there was rain, and it was like never-ending, but she was extremely supportive and always has been since I have served this city as Alderman. I'd first like to say that I'm really grateful to have the opportunity to, to serve again with this really incredible mayor and board of Aldermen that we have here tonight. It has been, for the past two years, really an exciting venture for me to be part of that, and I'm, I'm pleased to have that opportunity once again to continue serving with them. According to the census, or what we think the census report is, probably in excess of 25% of the voters in my ward went to the polls on election day. I'm extremely humbled by that because that probably is a record for a spring election. And to think that they, I came out on top, I'm, I'm really, like I said, quite humbled. My pledge to them, of course, as I always have, to be responsive to the citizens of Raytown and to continue the work that our mayor and this board has set out to do in the past two years. I think we've accomplished a lot. We have a long way to go, but once again, I'm excited, the path that we've chosen, and I think that the people of Raytown will be very pleased what we can accomplish in the future. Thank you.
On my oath, I hereby state that I, Charlotte Nelson, possess all of the qualifications described by the office of Aldermen by law, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Missouri, and the provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class, and the ordinances of the city of Raytown, Missouri, and faithfully demean myself in office. Since I was just told earlier this evening that I actually get to say something, my notes are on sticky notes, of course. When I started twelve years ago, my three children were 11, nine, and eight. They are not here this evening because they are 23, 22, and 20. They are, one is at with the University of Central Missouri's National Baseball Team as an athletic trainer this evening. The other one is, or Rachel, is a, doing her capstone at Research Hospital and will graduate in three weeks with her bachelor's in nursing. Matthew is a sophomore at UMKC in a production at the theater, at Spencer Theater down at UMKC. So they can be here this evening. But the reason I stand before you is because I did it for them twelve years ago, and I continue to do it for them today. I want to thank them for their support, as well as all the Raytown residents that have supported me in the past. I look forward to the next four years, and I also will continue to ask questions, to get the information for the Raytown residents, even if I have to ruffle a few feathers. Thank you.
described for the office of Aldermen by law, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Missouri, provisions of all laws of the state affecting cities of this class, and the ordinances of the city of Raytown, Missouri, and faithfully demean myself while in office. I'm honored again to, to serve citizens of Raytown. Appreciate all the support from the citizens of Ward IV, please call me, and I'm honored to serve with this board. On my oath, I do hereby state that I, Michael Lightfoot, possess all the qualifications described for the office of Aldermen by law, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Missouri, provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class, and the ordinances of the city of Raytown, Missouri, faithfully demean myself while in office. I just want to say that I had the hardest fought fight in the whole election campaign. And for those that don't know, I was unopposed, Kathy also, but it's been a great experience the first two years I was on the board, and I'm thankful that I got to come back and serve four more years. We've got a great mayor and board of Aldermen. We work well together, and I just look forward to moving forward with good progress in Raytown. Thanks.
Okay, with that complete, I'm going to hereby announce adjournment, and I'm told the pronunciation is signee die. We'd like for that to be about five to 10 minutes while we have a chance to, as Mr. Batagler has requested, a, a group photo and to greet our families and those in attendance. So adjournment, signee die for five, 10 minutes. Thank you.